Now you may begin.
I've got to wait for that red light. Okay, we're recording. I'd like to call to order the April 27th special meeting of Methacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. By way of announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, looks like we have all nine of our board members here this evening, as some members of administration. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Zerby to introduce our speaker.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, we have Dr. Deb Ucker, Principal of Woodland Elementary School, with us presenting. As you may recall, we asked Dr. Ucker almost six, eight months ago to take the lead on our full-day kindergarten program process, whereby brings us up to today where we are simply presenting information. And information that the board needs. I think it's also information that the public needs and our parents need. I'd understand the importance and the value that full-day kindergarten can provide, can potentially provide to Methacton School District. So Dr. Ucker is going to talk about a number of things this evening, but I think it's important to understand that while this is information for both the the board and the public, she'll be also talking about a timeline whereby it would be our recommendation that, again, we come back to the board after you've been able to digest this information and after we've received some feedback from the community, that in October of 2020, we update the presentation. And then we would ask that if it's reasonable to consider the recommendations from the October meeting at a meeting sometime in December of 2020. So with that said, I think it's important to know, as the board members do, that members of the public should know that there is no action scheduled for this evening. We're not asking the board to vote on anything. We're simply asking the board to listen to Dr. Ucker's presentation, which includes a number of important research-related aspects and important aspects that will help take Methacton into the next several years. So with that said, it gives me great pleasure to turn the microphone over to Dr. Deborah Ucker. As it may have been mentioned, we did produce, or she did produce, a binder with all this information in it for the board members to review. And one last note, we will be, after this meeting, posting the presentation, posting the video of this meeting, and we are asking for members of the public to provide comment up and through May 31st of 2020. So with that said, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Ucker, and we look forward to hearing your presentation. So I made you a co-host, Dr. Ucker. If you just want to, let me stop my screen, and then you can take over.
Great, thank you. I can share my screen now. Can you see it? Is it up? Is it up?
Yes, we can see your presentation.
Thank you. Well, thank you for coming out this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to go into full-day kindergarten and provide you with some of the research. I do want to say I am currently home with four teenage boys. So if you hear something in the background, I've really told them to not say a word, but they're hard to control, you know, for this lengthy period of time. So I do have to apologize if you hear something. So the purpose of this presentation, just like Dr. Zerby said, is I'm going to provide you with an explanation of the alignment between full-day kindergarten and our strategic plan. I want to give you opportunities to look at the PA Core kindergarten standards and how they relate to the whole child. I want to provide you with a synopsis of the current educational research on the development of the whole child and provide an explanation of the possible next steps. I was at the board meeting in October when Dr. Zerby was presenting the the idea of full-day kindergarten and the asking for permission to continue with the research. And one thing I heard from many of you was that you don't want it to be the new first grade, or you don't want everything in first grade pushed down to kindergarten, and that you really wanted to know what it was going to look like in a full-day kindergarten program. So that's my purpose today. I want to talk about the social and emotional development of children. I want to talk about the possibility of what it could look like, but I'm not going to get into the money and the finance and anything like that tonight. Tonight is strictly the research and providing you with an understanding of child development and how full-day kindergarten can relate to our strategic plan. So here we have the, our representation that you've seen that Dr. Zerby created based on our strategic plan. And inside it, you'll see the five tenants of the whole child, how a child grows healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to take each tenant of that whole child philosophy and relate it to two different things. I'm going to relate it to the full-day kindergarten, but I'm also going to relate it to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, because that's something in education that we base a lot of educational decisions on. So throughout the presentation, you'll be able to kind of hang your new information on not only the tenants of the full child, but also educational research that is grounded in what we do every day. And the purpose of all this is to provide that exceptional experience for every stakeholder in Methacton School District. So it's based, the presentation is based on all those five tenants, just like our strategic plan is, as well as Maslow's hierarchy of needs. So if you look at this pyramid, or look at the triangle, what all research has been grounded on is the fact that kids can't learn, or people don't learn, when their basic needs aren't met. Okay, so if you look at how he's classifying basic needs, we talk about safety needs, their physical needs such as food, water, warmth, rest, being, feeling safe, feeling like you belong somewhere and that you're loved, having those confidence or those esteemed needs. And all of those needs need to be fulfilled in everyone before you get to that self-actualization, which is the top of the pyramid, which is where true learning happens. So if you think about your own situations, you know, when you think about you're hungry and you're going to a meeting, your mind can't focus as much as it would if you were fed. If you feel unsafe, or you feel like you left your oven on, or you left, you know, you feel like something's unsafe, that takes control over your brain, and you don't perform as you would normally. The same thing with when you feel like you're an outcast, or you feel like you don't belong, or you don't feel loved. You know, you don't, you simply don't perform as well as you would. And when you're talking about a child, when you're talking about child development, the child doesn't learn like they could if those needs aren't met. So as we go through the presentation, we're going to be talking about the full child, or the whole child, but we're also going to be talking about these needs and how full-day kindergarten meets both our strategic plan of the whole child, but also how it meets Maslow's hierarchy of needs and how it enables our teachers to meet those needs better for our kids. So I gave you all the binder, and inside the binder, you see the kindergarten learning standards. And that huge document, it's eighty-some pages, that was created by the Pennsylvania Human Resources Department and Department of Education. So basically, when you're looking at a healthy child, if we take the first tenant of the whole child, how do healthy, how do we promote a healthy child? And basically, there's four aspects of growth when you're looking at child development, four aspects. They grow socially, emotionally, physically, and cognitively. And I'll take you through all of those and talk about the PA standards that you have in front of you and how that relates. I should be able to click on this so the public can see it as well. Okay, so this is the document. I know you guys all have this in front of you, but I wanted to show it for people in the audience who may not have the document in front of them. But as you can see, it's a very extensive document created by, like I said, the Department of Human Resources as well as the Department of Education. And let me just scroll down here so everyone can see.
Dr. Ucker, we're not seeing you.
Dr. Ucker, you're going to have to reshare the link that you just opened. You're still on the full-day kindergarten first page that you saw. So you have to reshare your new screen of the pop-up.
I'm not sure where that is. I see a green, oh, new share.
There you go.
Can you see it now?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for telling me. I would have kept going and going. So, all right, so if we look what, how they categorize this, and it's a huge document, they categorize it in not only the PA standards that we focus on, which is your your science, your ELA and your math, but it also talks about approaches to learning through play. It'll, if we scroll down, it'll talk about scientific thinking and technology, which we have been talking about in all our grade levels with our FSEs and our STEM this year. But social studies thinking, but it also goes into, let's see, the social and emotional development. So you can see it's extremely comprehensive as far as what they're doing. Now, clearly, in this document, it states that this document is created for a full-day kindergarten program. And all but six districts in Montgomery County right now offer this full-day program. If you read in the beginning of this document, it also states that if you're choosing to do, if your district chooses to do a half-day program, obviously, you can't compromise on the ones, on the standards in here that are from the PA Department of Education, which is our core academic standards. So basically, what they're saying is if you, if you choose to do half-day, that's your focus. The cognitive piece is your focus, but the social, emotional, and the physical, and the self-expression, all of those other areas are what have to go. So we're going to talk a little bit about how important that is. All right, let me try to go back. Can I, should I just be able to go back? Can you see it now? The PowerPoint?
Not yet.
Yeah, do the same thing. Reshare your new, the screen that you're looking at.
Now?
There you go. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So we'll talk, we'll talk about this healthy child, the first tenant of the whole child, and we'll talk about social health. What does social health look like? And how do you teach social health? All of that is developmental, and it's not something that you can teach by standing in front of a class and just saying, "This is what it's like to have a friend. This is what it's like to not have a friend. This is how you have to be polite." None of that is how you actually teach it. Kids, when it comes to social and emotional health, they learn through play. And play is the essence of how the young learner's mind categorizes information, organizes information, and applies the information. So in order to reach all those components of growth in a child, we really have to focus on play. Now, not play what you think of, you know, outside on the playground, although that is a little part of it when you're talking to recess, but really planned play, where the teacher designs activities based on child interest and based on where, what, and how she wants those children to grow. So I'll talk a little bit more about play as we go along, but that really is an essential element of child development as well as a place that we can get kids to form the structure for learning as we progress through the academic, their academic career. So I think, you guys don't have this in your binder. I just wanted to give you some visuals of what we're talking about when we talk about play in a kindergarten classroom. My goal originally was to get pictures of our kids and put them up here, but, you know, I was kind of challenged with that as far as where we are right now. So if you think about the pictures you see in front of you and you think of up there in the corner where we have kids experimenting, I believe that's probably oobleck. That has to, it's both a liquid and a solid, depending on how it is, and depending on how you're touching it. So imagine the inquisitiveness of those kids. Just look at their faces. The teacher can come over and she can talk about, okay, why is it turning to a liquid when you touch it? And let's, let's take turns as we are creating the oobleck. If you look down in the bottom and you see a little boy coloring, he's responding to something the teacher read. He's responding in his own personal way. You see the kids in the background, and they're learning to play. They're learning to communicate as they are sitting together playing with the toys there. So we're talking about activities that not only engage the student in linguistic, talking to each other, but also developing those social and emotional skills that we know are so important. So if we talk about emotional health, in order to, in order to get to that self-actualization, we have to nurture a child's emotional growth, okay? Think about what we're going through right now. We're going through a very, we're going through a crisis now in our community. And it's important for us to use those strategies to control our own emotions. It's important for us to show resiliency, for decision-making skills, to show empathy. And those skills, those skills aren't inbred. Those skills can be taught. So we want to be able to provide an opportunity for our youngest learners to manage their emotions, to set goals, to think about how to be a good decision-maker. And again, what's a good way that they're going to learn this? They're not going to learn it strictly by reading a book. They're not going to learn it by their teacher telling them it. They're going to learn it through their socialization and their activities where they're engaged with other students through structured play. So the World Health Organization suggests that kids in the age, oh, we're still on healthy. This is the physical health, so we're still on the healthy tenant. That the World Health Organization said that kids at the age from five to eighteen should have sixty minutes a day of physical health, of exercise, rather. So there's a lot of documentation, a lot of research out there that talks about kids who are healthy. Kids are healthier when they're physically active. And currently, right now, in our half-day program, we have fifteen minutes of recess, and we have thirty minutes of PE once a week. A full-day kindergarten would allow us to elaborate on that time. Obviously, they would be able to have more recess, maybe recess different parts of the day so that they are getting that gross motor skill. We'd be able to do PA, PE more than thirty minutes once a week, whether it looks like it's, whether it looks like the other grade levels where it's fifty minutes once a week, or it looks like two sessions of thirty minutes, whatever it looks like, we can offer a lot more. We have that time and flexibility to offer more in a full-day schedule. The next tenant is safe of the whole child. So what is safety and security in kindergarten? What does that mean? That's obviously the safety and security of the physical plan. It's, in a full-day kindergarten, they'd obviously be exposed to more fire drills and more of the drills that we do on a regular basis. So not only the physical safety, but you're also thinking of emotional safety, and you're thinking of things like bullying. When you talk about, when you talk about early minds and you look at all the educational research out there, the first six years are the most essential in developing how the child is going to respond to adversity, how the child's going to respond to others, how the child is going to respond in critical situations. Those first six years are really paramount in developing the pattern of how they're going to respond in the future. So when you look at a child who is aggressive and who is demonstrating, demonstrate, I want to say demonstrating being a bully, but they're socially not using skills appropriately, we can teach them. We can teach them how to, how to manage their emotions better so that everybody is safer. You know, we talk about, we talk about things that are happening in, you know, Skyview and up above where bullying may be an issue. Well, is it because we didn't spend enough time when your kids are five and six and seven years old, enough time really teaching them how to handle aggressive behavior? And on the other side, how to, how to promote yourself and how to ask for help when needed. So safety and security, important not only in the physical layout of the school and what they're exposed to when they're there for that much more time, but also in their own peer relationships, feeling safe. And you think about this with even teachers mixing the kids up, being cognizant of the fact that some kids may never have played with other kids before. So she purposely makes those groups and purposely plans activities so that she's promoting those feelings of tolerance, and she's promoting those feelings that kids, you know, that kids need to be able to form social relationships. Okay, so obviously, Maslow talks about being safe and being, that learning doesn't happen unless you feel safe enough. And in our tenants of a whole child, safety is important as well. So engaged is our next tenant, and what is, what does engagement look like in kindergarten? So when you're talking about a five- and six-year-old, they don't, they learn differently. They learn through experimental opportunities. They learn through their bodies. They learn through doing. They learn through singing. They learn through interactions with others. And they, they learn through self-directed activities as well. But what a full-day kindergarten allows us to do is provide the time for that engagement. You saw how much, how many standards there were that teachers need to cover. And when you were talking about two and a half hours, your main emphasis is getting through those key academic standards. But, and our kindergarten teachers are doing an amazing job, and I want to put that out there. Not saying they're not, but imagine if they had six and a half hours or seven hours to engage students, how much more, more activities they can design to enrich students. Supported is the other tenant we're talking about, and what does support look like in a full-day kindergarten program? Right now, in two and a half hours, support can be very limited because you're looking at a scheduling issue. We want to see in full-day kindergarten, we would like to see the speech, reading support, math support, English language development, emotional support, or all included into the kindergarten room. In two and a half hours, that's really not possible because there's just, it's so, the time is so limited. But we would like to see those kid, those supports come into kindergarten instead of pulling our kindergartners out. The only reason we have to pull them out now is because we don't have the time. We have to take them from somewhere. So if they were there all day, we would be able to ensure that they got their support inside their classroom. That could look like the therapist going outside for recess with them and talking to them about social play. So there's a lot of opportunities for us to be inclusive in a full-day program versus the two and a half hours that we currently have. Challenged, when you're talking about what does challenge to look like in a full-day kindergarten? In order, I mean, kindergartners, you know, you have very confident kindergartners. You have very shy kindergartners. You have, you know, five years old, sometimes it's the first time they've been exposed to the sheer amount of time it take the teacher to get to know a child to say, "Oh, wow, this child, I really need to challenge this child," is really limited in a two-and-a-half-hour program. Because again, we're condensing everything into two-and-a-half hours. So I'm not saying that we don't challenge. We do. We do try as much as we can. But if we had the flexibility of time, if we had more opportunities for our teachers to get to know kids and motivate kids, then you would see them obviously growing more and flourishing more in the kindergarten environment. Another part of what you want to understand is kindergarten is a time that you're supposed to love school. I mean, you love school in elementary school, right? That's what, that's what we want to create. We want to create lifelong learners. We want to create passion in our kids with curiosity and a place where they can grow and feel nurtured. And that's very tough to do in two-and-a-half hours. We do it. We do it. We have amazing teachers who do it well. But imagine the benefit to a five- or a six-year-old child if they could have a full day of kindergarten.
Dr. Ucker, sorry to interrupt. I wanted to give you a chance to breathe, maybe get a drink of water. And can you, do you mind sharing your screen again? Because this next slide is probably very useful for people to see. I see your face. I'm not sure if that's what everyone else.
Oh, well, I don't want that.
I see this slide.
Oh, okay. I must be on the wrong slides.
I see this slide.
Okay, I'm on the wrong thing. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, but now you got to breathe.
I did get to breathe. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next slide, I'm going to just push my little camera over here. The next slide is not a reflection of Methacton time at all. I was looking at different schedules throughout Montgomery County, and I was trying to give you a synopsis of a half-day program versus a full-day program. And some half-day programs are two hours and fifty-five minutes, some are two hours and forty-five, some are two forty. So I kind of broke it down that way. But I wanted you to look at the, what we've been talking about, the areas of core development being academic, social, and emotional. And in a full-day kindergarten, how much more unity we have to provide the social and emotional piece. Now, that's not, I'm not, I'm not insinuating that ELA can't be social and that math can't be emotional. I'm not suggesting that. What I'm saying is the core reason or what the teacher's objective is in that would be the cognitive development, right? So I kept the little book the same in the other chart, but also knowing that class meeting and things like that are not only cognitive, but they're the wellness and they're the, I'm sorry, they're the social and emotional wellness as well. So you see that we just have so much more time in a full-day program to look at the emotional and the social piece. But again, I didn't, and I haven't gone to the teachers with this schedule or whatnot. I was kind of just summarizing what I've seen from districts across Montgomery County. So I did meet with our teachers, and in January through, was it January? Yeah, it was in January. Every week in January, I went to a new school, and I got some teacher feedback. And they had a lot of great input, a lot of great questions. I can tell you that kindergarten and first-grade teachers are thrilled that that is, that we are considering a full-day kindergarten program. They really want us to focus on that social, emotional development, but they had concerns when it comes to the space. What are, where are we going to put all these other classes? They really wanted training on play learning. The specialists and the counselors and the ELL teachers came, and they were so excited about the opportunity of actually going into a kindergarten classroom instead of pulling kindergarten classroom, instead of pulling little kindergartners out. They were talking about curriculum review and what it would look like as far as, as far as those standards that I showed you. So the teachers, we did get their input, and I have it all on a webpage that I gave them access to, as well as all the research on play, learning through play, and social, emotional development of kids as well. So I'm going to have to share this again, but this is what the site looks like, just so you're aware. Can you see it?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so the first thing that starts with is Dr. Zerby's presentation that he did in October. And then we talk about, I give them the social, emotional development research. Here's a synopsis of our staff meetings. We talk about developmental approach. So they had this in February. I believe I made this active for teachers in February. And there's a professional development piece here because obviously, if in February and, um, there's a professional development piece here because obviously if we're choosing to go this route, there will be professional development that has to be done as far as, um, a full day kindergarten program. So, um, part of my goal was to keep the teachers informed, um, throughout this whole process so that they understand, um, what may change and that they can communicate with me through this. So everything that I'm sharing with you, well, uh, this I didn't share yet. But once I share it with you, I'll put it up here for the teachers to be able to see as well, so that they stay informed in, um, the whole process. You share, sorry. Back?
Yes.
So what our next steps may be is, um, like Dr. Zerby said, I would like to continue with the research specific to Mefactin needs. Be looking at, you know, financially what has to happen, um, with human resources, what has to happen. Um, we'd like to arrange for teachers to engage in some professional development, no matter what we decide on this issue. Um, I think it would be powerful for teachers to, um, to involve themselves in professional development with all the current research on playing or learning through play. Um, I'd like to visit full day kindergarten programs in Montgomery County, we actually had, um, a visit set up on March eighteenth to go to Upper Marion, but you know, life had other plans, so, um, I would like us to be able to, uh, visit other programs, to ask questions. I know North Penn, this was their first year with it. Um, and, well, you know, I was reaching out to that coordinator as well to see if we could, um, visit, but as you, we can't do anything now, um. So then I would like to come back and present all the, the fiscal responsibility and everything. Um, a breakdown of transportation and what that means for lunch and what it means at each school, what does each school look like? Um, give you much more detail as far as what Mefactin's needs are in October. Um, and then hopefully a vote in December as Dr. Zerby suggested. In October's presentation, we'll talk about the costs, the staffing, the prevention of development needed. How each school is going to, um, handle the space. We'll talk about cafeteria issue, curriculum needs, transportation, so all of that, um, full explanation of how it affects Mefactin will be in October's presentation, if you're okay with that. So wrapping up, actually, um, we're back to where we started and we are talking about um, ensuring that we are student focused here at Mefactin, that we are providing healthy, safe, engaged, supported and challenged, um, opportunities so that we are looking at the whole child. In order to look at the whole child, in order to meet all the tenants of the whole child, we need time. And that's what it boils down to, Mefactin needs time to focus on the whole child. Mefactin needs time to ensure an exceptional experience for all students, especially our youngest learners. And I gave you my research again, in your binder that I provided for you, I just took little clips of research, it, um, just you know, different ones that I thought were important. If you would like any other research, I can certainly provide that for you and I can certainly, um, give you anything you need as far as validation for anything that I've talked about tonight. But I thank you and, um, I'll turn it over for questions.
Well done, Dr. Uker, thank you so much for sharing, uh, this presentation and your thoughts, um. Uh, we can certainly tell that, uh, this is not only important for Mefactin School District, but as an elementary principal, uh, it surely, uh, shows that you believe in this and now we appreciate the, uh, the, the presentation. So, so with, you're welcome, so with that said, uh, as, as I mentioned earlier, when we, when we started tonight's meeting, uh, that our goal tonight is to take, uh, comments from the board, from the public. Um, but also knowing that, uh, we'll, we'll leave an opportunity for comments through May thirty-first of, of twenty twenty. Uh, what we would like to do is have anyone who's interested in, in sharing their thoughts, either on the presentation or anything else associated with full day kindergarten, to email information at Mefactin.org and we will make sure that Dr. Uker and, uh, and the teachers and anyone else involved in the, in the process as well as the board members, uh, receive, uh, those comments so that we can, uh, you know, use that information to best uh, move the, the process forward and, and consider all people's opinions. Uh, so with that said, uh, uh, Madam President, I, I think that, uh, you know, now would be either a good time to take questions from the board and then following that, we can take questions from the, the, the public if you so desire.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, um, and just because I know that there are some participants that may not have been, um, with us at the very beginning of the meeting, I just want to reiterate that this is not a meeting for action, for decision, for a vote, this is a meeting for the purposes of discussion of gathering information for next steps. Um, so I, I don't want anyone thinking that any decision is going to be made here this evening. We are just looking to get some sense of direction for the board, um, that we can direct administration and Dr. Uker, um, on how we want to proceed with, um, this full day kindergarten option. So, um, with that, I will, um, I guess, look to the board for any questions.
Um, I'll go first, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Dr. Uker, thank you so much, um, and you, you definitely helped answer some of our questions because you, you said in the beginning, we weren't interested in full day kindergarten to have more work for the children, just like you described it. Better work, the more social emotional piece, because that's my fear as an educator. Um, that kindergarten, it, every, you know, the, the, the cliche in the book, everything you learned in kindergarten, everything you need to know in life, you learned in kindergarten, well, now we're so busy having kids learn to read in kindergarten that you, you hit on it, so I'm not gonna reiterate your, your wonderful presentation. What I, my question is more just not really a question, but a comment for the October meeting, um. When we meet in October, it's obviously gonna be very important because we'll be that much closer to making a decision. Um, and I know you mentioned the other districts in Montgomery County, so I believe, um, for, for that October um, presentation, I, if we could just have a little bit of statistics and anecdotal information from Montgomery County, meaning, um, we are in the minority, how many, how many, what exactly are we in the minority? Like who has it, who doesn't? But more importantly, that what they've learned from filled it, full day kindergarten, the successes that they've had or the, or quite frankly, the, the, the negatives that they've come across. And I would imagine our North Penn friends would help us with that being that they're so new at it. So, I think this was wonderful to kind of wrap my head around full day kindergarten um, as a philosophy, um, the next part would be kind of more specific to to Montgomery County and, and some of our neighboring districts. Um, thank you very much again for everything.
Oh, you're welcome, and, um, I can tell you that the only districts in Montgomery County that do not have the full day kindergarten are Sotterton, Lower Marion, PV, Springford, Upper Perk and us. So we are, we are, um, there are six that do not, all the rest of them have gone to a full day kindergarten approach. Um, but absolutely, um, this was Upper Marion's second year, um, in full day kindergarten and that's where we were going to visit and part of our questions for the teachers and the principal was going to be, what did you learn last year? So that you changed this year, so absolutely totally respect that and I will, um, I'll be reaching out to other districts hopefully in September.
All right, I have a, a couple of things, um, I always get called on last as the president, so I'm taking my presidential power here jumping in. This presentation was exactly what I was hoping that we would get, um, and I actually knew that we would get this coming from you, Dr. Uker, I really appreciate this.
Yeah.
Is this, um, Dr. Zerby, will this be available on our website? And will the presentation have all of these links active? Because I, what I would like ideally is for the public to be able to see, um, see what this binder looks like, uh, for starters, but that, it sounds like this although the links within this PDF, um, would serve the same needs, I want people to be able to, um, be, uh, privy to the same information that we have here.
Yes, I believe that, uh, following the meeting after, we're gonna, we're gonna post the, uh, the video of this, uh, meeting along with the presentation and any other additional information that people ask for that, uh, that we can provide. So there will be a section on the, on the district website for this kindergarten information to collect and to present over time.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, and so Dr. Uker, in any of these, um, districts that you've looked at, are there any that offer a mix of full day and half day programs? Or are they all or nothing, is it, is it all one or the other?
No, there were two, um, that had, uh, was a choice based.
Okay.
I, I didn't, I, I would have to gather that for which one they are, but, um.
I know Springford is one, not to jump in, but Springford has the mix, that for next year.
Um, so I can definitely find that out for you, uh, the mix, I know that a couple of the districts had the mix ten, fifteen years ago and have moved to a full day program. I believe it was, um, I believe it was Wissahicken that started out with the okay plus program, they, some of them call it a K plus program. Um, but they were found, they found that it was an opportunity, if they could provide it for all kids, they wanted to be able to provide it for all kids. But I can absolutely get you that information.
Yeah, I, I think that it's worth, um, you know, as we're trying to keep all of our options open and available to us, if a hybrid works or even if, if it, we find a hybrid has not worked for other districts, it'd be interesting to hear why it didn't work so that we know um, in the, the same spirit of learning from what others have done before us. Um, I, I really like the idea of surveying these other districts in Montgomery County and, and hearing what their learnings are. Um, another thing that I'd like to see us do, Dr. Zerby, is, um, if we could survey um, our current kindergarten and possibly first grade families to look into how many of those children are actually in some sort of a full day program or were in a full day program? Because I think that might give us some sense of what the actual need is within our district. Um, I know many families, um, have two working parents and so they have, in addition to our half day program, have their children going to a half day daycare program. Um, some families will start their children in a private kindergarten before moving to Mefactin for first grade, so, um, I think that that will help us to really identify what our need is here in Mefactin. Um, I know that something that has come up in, um, communications that I've gotten from members of the community is whether or not there's the option of um, charging for full day kindergarten or for a partial program or, or however we wanted to do it. Um, as a public school, I know we, we generally, we do not charge and that's, that's not the, the basis of the public school model. But, um, just in the interest of gathering all the information and, and hearing the, the questions coming from the public, um, is that something that would even be a possibility that we could entertain?
We could certainly look into that, I, I, I think that, um, nothing's impossible, but, um, I believe that there will be some challenges with, with doing that, but let us, just get back to the board on that.
To be clear, that's not something that I would look at as being ideal, particularly because I think a lot of the families that could benefit most from a full day program may not be the ones who are, um, the best situated to pay for a full day program, so, um, it's not necessarily something I would advocate for, but I do think it's worth looking into what the options are in terms of how we, we fund this program as we get more information. I think that's all I have for right now, so I will turn it back over to the rest of the board and, um, I'm reserving my right to jump in again later if I think of something else.
You have all the rights.
Thank you again, Dr. Uker, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from members of the board? Raise a hand, Samira, yes?
Yeah, hi Deb, thank you very much, that was a great presentation. I do have a comment and I guess to play, um, to play on both sides of the fence. Um, one of the comments, when you go through the literature, so first of all, I want to say thank you for the binder was, um, full of really great information. But when you go through the, um, I guess the data for full day kindergarten and compared to half day kindergarten, I feel like the data sometimes is a little bit, um, is a little bit skewed. I was wondering what your thoughts are and I agree with Kim's, um, point about comparing to see what districts, I guess, what schools also have maybe a hybrid program. I was wondering what your thoughts are because there's data that suggests that over time, maybe by the third grade, the differences, um, are very minimal. So I was wondering, since you spent a lot of time looking into this, if you can provide a little bit of input on it.
I absolutely can, um, thank you for that, that was, um, I actually wanted to bring that up in my presentation. Um, so it does, much of the research out there says that the cognitive and they're only measuring the cognitive skills. So your reading and math scores level out by third grade. What it doesn't identify for you is what supports are put into place for first grade and second grade in order to get those kids at the same level, okay? So, the majority of research, I've read thousands of articles, the majority of research does indicate that these school, the kids in full day kindergarten score higher at the end of kindergarten. Okay, so if you look at Mefactin's data, typically from the year two thousand sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, um, when you look at our data over the course of those three years, we have an average of twenty-four to twenty-seven percent of our kids who need, um, intervention in first grade or second grade, um, to catch up. So yes, do we catch them up? We do, but what, at what cost? What, what could we be doing for those kids if we had them a full day in kindergarten? So cognitively and, um, academically, do our kids catch up in third grade? They do, but we put a lot of resources in place in first grade and second grade to give them opportunities to form those foundational, those foundational skills in ma, especially in reading, in reading mainly. Um, but we catch them up because that's what we do in elementary school, but if we had more time in kindergarten, what could we do with them in first grade instead of pull them out for support?
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from members of the board, on Mr. Winters?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Dr. Uker, um, very good. A couple of questions that, uh, that you can, uh, circle back on. Um, it, I found it very interesting that the requirements from the state on the half day kindergarten are primarily built around the educational when it, when kindergarten is sort of an optional type of thing for a district, is there any? It's a wild guess, but is there any educational flexibility or you required if you do that half day kindergarten, you have to only focus? You're, you, you mentioned it, but it seems like it's sort of counterintuitive, it's like if you choose to do it, you have to do it this way, but you don't have have to actually, um, you, you know what I'm saying, it's all, it, it's, it's mainly around the educational focus for those two and a half hours. But if you go to six hours, you have a lot more flexibility of what you want to do with.
Correct, and that's the Department of Health that came in and united with, um, with the, uh, state, um, the Department of Education, so when they came together, um, well, well, let me back up by saying when you look at the PA Core standards, it's a continuum from kindergarten all the way up through grade twelve, expedite, um, expectations at each grade level, what kids will master, so that's basically the Department of Ed and what they have set as criteria for expectation. There's nothing else from the Department of Ed that talks about the social and emotional and that piece, that's the Department of, um, the Department of Health that, um, united with the Department of Education and added all the um, extra social and emotional and experimental and play into, um, into an elementary curriculum. Because part of, I mean, into a kindergarten curriculum, part of what they were doing together with the, the Department of Education is looking at preschool, so they, they were, the, the Department of Education was saying, okay, you need to do this in preschool to get them ready for school age and that was the job of the, the department, the state Department of Education. So when they were looking at pre, the, the kinder, the Head Start programs and the pre-kindergarten programs, then they, um, they talked about early childhood extending into kindergarten, because you're talking about five years old, you're still, it's still early childhood education, in fact, our teachers who are certified in early childhood education are pre-K through grade two. So you're still looking at early childhood education. So you're still looking at early childhood education, which is all that extra stuff that the Department of, um, Health put into that document that I showed you. So yes, but as far as the PA core standards, do we hit all the PA core standards in kindergarten? We absolutely do, but that's our focus isn't two and a half hours. If we were able to have more time, we could focus on the whole child.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, and you don't have to comment on all of these, but I, I just, some questions I have is have you done any research on class size? Cause we do have this 22 in our policy, uh, K through second and 22 with a, with one kindergarten teacher for six hours, uh, seems like that would be, um, we might, there, the, the, this class size seems to have that bigger impact at the smaller grades, the younger grades is what I guess I'm getting at. So the cost associated with it was based on that criteria or smaller class size, larger class size, when you get into this in October. Um, so that you get my point there.
Yes.
You mentioned, um, that you talked about the choice, I'll skip over that. Some of the other early feedback we've got back for the community and, and mentioned many times before is the T1 program that we provided that aspect for, for recovery from the academic perspective. Can you speak towards the inclusiveness aspect of the T1?
So I think T1 was, it, um, the way you described it is not exactly the way it was meant to be. T1 was a time to grow. So what would happen is the kids, it really didn't have to do with your academic performance. It had to do with your social and emotional growth. So the kids who were, um, who were struggling, um, to meet those social emotional demands of kindergarten were, um, put into the T1, um, but it gave them time that the whole essence of a T1 program is time to grow. So the focus of those teachers was to provide opportunities to, they, they weren't doing all the first grade core standards, if you will, or the first grade curriculum. It was kind of like a hybrid between kindergarten and first grade, but their emphasis was, was being that time to grow socially and emotionally for kids.
Okay, thanks for correcting me.
Maturity was a huge issue.
Yeah. Um, the, the other aspect is, uh, I would love to see statistically, um, I think Kim mentioned it before, but also, you know, what students along the way, around, along the path have gone to a pre- K, pre-K program somewhere outside, obviously outside the district? Only until this recently, um, have we had something even at Arcola. So understanding the elements of the three to four-year-old development as well and how important it is, if it is more important, less important than the kindergarten, uh, so when we're making these choices about, you know, can we afford it? Is it the right thing to do, et cetera, et cetera? Understanding which has a bigger weight on that aspect. So, um, I appreciate all your time. Oh, one, I'm sorry, last question. I think, I think the point that's been made, uh, about the cost, when we get to that point, I realize we're not talking, but we cannot underestimate that there's additional costs associated with this around, um, you know, potentially a co-teach aspect or whatever would need to be done. And maybe, you know, the alternatives, maybe the class size of 25, uh, of being taught with two, with an eight and not, um, something with the flexibility that we have on those, those items, when a lot of times they end up being part of the cost. And I think for us to just say we need eight new staff members to teach, uh, kindergarten under, underestimates the cost and the delivery that we need to provide. So, thank you again.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from members of the board? Ms. Drummond?
Thank you for putting this together. Um, in principle, I'm in favor of full day kindergarten, but I guess there's the practical matters of the budget impact and the, you know, budget uncertainty ahead with, with everything that's going on. So I, I guess I would like to reiterate, looking at a hybrid program, I mean, I'm envisioning one more based on student needs, student screening, um, you know, screening process, student need, because then I think you could, it might not be the full cost right away, but you can still, I, I do think it's very important to target the students who maybe need the extra academic time as well as the extra social emotional development time in the classroom, in the kindergarten classroom. So I would really like to see sort of both proposals, um, of a, you know, one that's sort of, you know, where the students in need could really, you know, use the, and really benefit from the full day kindergarten. And then the full day kindergarten as a blanket program for all the students as well, if you could do that, I would really appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Any other questions from members of the board? Ms. Cankel?
My, I think everyone's kind of really said most of the things. I, I do want to say though, I am not such a fan of, of the tiered, being an occupational therapist, I understand focusing on the needs of a student, um, but I just want to stress that, uh, time is what really is the factor and time provides opportunity and opportunity should be given to all students, whether the parents are co, you know, both working, not working, their economic status, you're looking at children with related services, children that are challenged, but in the end, I think you look at just the whole child. That child, whether they have needs or strengths, I think the focus is providing opportunity. And, and in this day and age, um, we have to more than ever look at the social emotional learning, looking at the, the social growth, the cognitive growth, like everything that we went through today, um, because it's the opportunity, these kids are cut, in my opinion, are coming from pre-K, a full pre-K and going down and then don't have the time in a kindergarten program. So I, I understand everyone asking for these tiered approaches. Um, I think it's definitely needed for those kids who to get related services because it takes them out of so much structured opportunity for them, but overall, I think we should just look at every child as being equal, no matter where, where they're coming with, with strengths or needs. It's opportunity for us to present it to the child. So it's just my opinion.
And two, if I can, if, am I allowed to respond? Can I say something? Doctor, can I say?
I will give you the, yes, you may respond to my statement. I bring.
I didn't know, but it was a statement, it wasn't a question, so I want to know.
It's open dialect.
So, um, yeah, I, I saw an interesting fact that I looked up when you were saying that, um, the US Department of Mental Health on adolescents reported that 32% of adolescents feel, uh, severe anxiety and/or depression and, um, hopelessness. And, you know, as educators, that, that light touches your heart, that's one in every three kids feels hopeless or like there's, there's no chance in life and that anxiety and that, that starts so young. If we can start building those skills and how to deal with hard situations and how to deal with, um, your feelings early and we, we, we build the foundation, we may see kids who are able to cope with hard situations better.
I mean, and that's why we even focus on the reach. We started with the reach, like we said, in Skyview and are, actually, we're looking to go down, like we're going up for the high school first, but we're looking to go down also into the younger grades because they do need, they need this help, they need this growth. It's just for some reason, and with the research that you provided us, this is what we need is to give them opportunity to grow in all the areas.
And I think too, we look at it like a full day kindergarten is not solving a problem, it's preventing them. So, you know, you're, you're trying to look at this child 10 years from now and you're trying to give them skills to handle life 10 years from now. So you're, you're setting the groundwork, you're building a house and every, every grade is a different part of the house. When you're talking about kindergarten, you're building the structure of the house. You're building the structure and how they're going to react to situations. You're building the structure and how they're going to handle their emotions and you're building the structure as to how, um, they're going to learn. So, um, a strong structure takes you a lot farther.
And my last statement is, these are the little ones that take time to just figure out where they're, they have to sit down and we give them such short amount of time to even do a gym class for 30 minutes and they have to even figure out where the circle is, like we're, the children who need more time to learn and adapt, we're providing the shortest amount of time. And it's such an interesting overall concept to me that those kids, they just need the time to, give them time to figure it out. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Cankel. Are there any other questions from members of the board? Mr. Navarrett?
I hate to follow that because that was really, really good between the two of you. I think you guys hit it right on the head. I guess most of what I had to ask about has been answered. Um, now the one question that I would ask is around some of the research and I know obviously it's way easier to measure academic performance, right? We do, we try so hard to do that, we've got all kinds of different ways to do that, but is there anything out there, are there ways to measure like social and emotional development? Has anybody looked at this even from, I don't know, dollars spent on, you know, support services kind of before and after? I mean, are there ways to look at that?
Um, actually, in one of the articles that I gave you, it does do an analysis, a rate of return on where you invest the most time and it's the first seven years of a child's life is where your biggest rate of return is that you invest in. If you give me one second, I'll find it in the binder so you can look at it. Okay, so it's on page 13 in your tab that says lit review. Okay, and let me just, let me start by saying that this lit review, I, was actually provided to me just, um, a couple of weeks ago by, um, someone in our community who must have found out I was doing this. And I had a different literature review for you, but this one is, was developed in Canada, but was so worldwide, the research in here is so worldwide that I thought that this one was actually a better lit review as I read through it. But they do have, um, the rates of return in human development investment across all ages. And as you can see in that picture, your first six years, you're going to get the, um, you're going to get the most rate, um, the higher rate of return for what you invest in the child's education. So, um, you know, that article really hits on how important it is to have good preschool and kindergarten programming, because that's where you're, you're going to see the, I don't want to say the best bang for your buck, but you're going to see the best rate of return for what you put into the education because those kids are the most, um, able to be formed.
Yeah, and that makes, that's, I mean, it intuitively makes sense. I'm, I'm wondering if there was anything done, has anybody even looked at it locally in the other districts? Like what, what they've, and I mean a comparison between half day and full day. It seems like such a small sample size to really be able to draw, tease any conclusions out of, but, um, just something, something to look into. I think, believe me, I understand it. Um, I've been coached on it for a long time. Um, you know, I think Jen hit it right on the head, right? Time equals opportunity here. So I think we've just got to, you know, particularly not to bring all this back to financial deductions discussion, but in, in October, when we look at it, you know, where the market sits at that time and, and, you know, how, how our world has recovered from where we are right now, uh, I think it's going to, it's going to say a lot about, you know, what we can do with this and when, but, um, yeah, I look forward to it. Um, keep it coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navarrett. Any other comments, questions from the board? Ms. Hall?
I think I'm probably the last one, aren't I? So I, I'll be brief. I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I think it, um, had certainly a lot of information in it and I appreciated the inclusion of the standards because that was, um, a lot of information, but it was important information and I think the public needs to see that too. Um, but you did a great job showing why this is important and why we need to consider this. And I think the, the other side of this is the how that we're going to see in October. So how it's going to fit into our buildings and into our budget is another part of the puzzle that we need to figure out, but thank you, it was a great job.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Uh, any other comments from members of the board?
Yes, I am, I'm exercising that right. I, I, no, I, I think one of the things that I had, had thought of, um, looking ahead at the, the financing of this, because I think it's very easy to see the benefits of having this program. Um, what's the challenge that I see us facing is, um, knowing when is the right time financially for us to be able to implement this. And to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Navarrett was saying, I'm wondering if there is any data available that we could look at to tease out, um, a decrease in, in some of those supports that you've, um, talked about. You know, we've got, you said 27% of our, our kids needing supports, um, in those early grades so that they can be on level with their peers by third grade. Um, in talking to these other districts that have recently implemented a program, I, I don't know if it's something that's available to them or not. Um, and, and obviously if it wasn't, if we didn't design a study to look at it, it's looking at correlation and not causation, but I think it's important still to be able to, to put a little bit of a, um, a cost analysis behind this, um, so that we can see, you know, a, like you said, we're, we're looking at preventing a problem, not solving it, which I think is a beautiful way of putting this, that we're, we're not trying to, um, to fix something that's happening in kindergarten. Um, you know, I remember when, when my first son was in kindergarten and they still had, we saw the T1 program, um, and when we talked to his kindergarten teacher about it, the, the question that she asked was, you have to think about where your child is going to be in middle school, which as a parent of a kindergartner is, it's kind of mind-boggling to think about what is your kid going to be like in middle school, but it's absolutely, that's, that's how you determine the supports that you're putting in place at that age is, um, you're looking at that long-term investment. So, um, it's clearly a, a big part of the, the mindset of Methacton and I'm glad to hear it. Um, and I think that that might actually be it for me. So now I will, I will step back and if no one else on the board has anything, um, I think Dr. Zerby would now be an appropriate time then for us to move to courtesy of the floor.
Yeah, I, I believe so. I just want to make one other quick comment. So listening to the feedback this evening, I mean, and certainly hearing what Dr. Uker has shared, um, it seems like there's, there's, there's a common understanding that more time is, is needed in terms of time in school or time in, in the development of, of all children. So in, in terms of some of the comments that we received, um, it's a matter of doing a full day kindergarten for everyone, or it's a matter of doing, uh, full day kindergarten for certain, uh, students, or it's a matter of having some type of hybrid program whereby students attend and get access, all students get access to, um, care, uh, you know, education and some other third-party type of social emotional care, uh, which is typically, uh, the hybrid type models that I believe Ms. Drummond might have been referring to. Uh, but, but generally speaking, uh, I, I think it's probably, uh, equally critical for us not only to find the data that, uh, in addition to the academic scores, but also to prepare that if time is really the, uh, the, the factor that we need to get more of for all of our children, that, uh, we present the, uh, in October, present, you know, what those other options would look like in terms of their cost and, and benefits, uh, and then what, what the drawbacks would be associated with, uh, not having a full day kindergarten program delivered by Methacton teachers, uh, for a full day. So, uh, unless there's objections to that, uh, I think that's probably, uh, after, you know, I sort of want to talk with Dr. Uker, but I think those are some of the reasonable approaches that we'll take as we, uh, further develop, uh, the concept and options available for your consideration. Uh, because quite frankly, uh, it was mentioned by, by at least one board member, if not others, you know, there is some uncertainty in terms of, uh, financials, uh, just keeping the programs that we have, uh, before us. Uh, we recognize that and I know that you as board members recognize that. I know Dr. Uker understands that as well, so we're not doing something that, uh, is completely out of the ordinary or trying to push full day kindergarten at a time when, uh, you know, there's some, uh, uncertainty, uh, with the financial future, but this was a, a path that we've been on and, uh, we started back in October and it's clear that, uh, you know, we're continuing down that path. Dr. Uker's done a fantastic job, as demonstrated here tonight, of providing information and we're going to continue that, going on that path, uh, and hopefully, uh, And hopefully, you know, things get clearer for all of us in terms of the options that are available as, as, as a district going forward and what the financial outlook will, will be. And hopefully in October, we'll have a better picture, and maybe by December, we'll have a, a pretty good idea of what that can, can be and what we want it to be, and we can move this ship forward. So with that said, I think it's important to let the members of the public know that, that, you know, if they're logged on, there's a way to raise their hand. And I guess the board president, you will call on those people individually and give an opportunity to speak.
Yes, and I do ask that people please be patient, because this is our first time using the hand raising option with Zoom. We've had a couple of virtual meetings, and we had people pre-register for those if they wanted to speak. So I see, I see hands going up, so that's good. I will do my best to make sure that I don't accidentally click the wrong button, because that makes me a little nervous. So for those of you who-
And I just want to interrupt one, one last time. And it is also important that if people want to, if they don't feel comfortable speaking this evening, they can certainly send an email with their comments and suggestions and questions to information@methacton.org. And we'll be collecting comments and suggestions for the next month.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Zerbi. I also want to reiterate, so this is a time for courtesy of the floor, which is the opportunity for residents to provide comments on matters that could come before the Board of Directors. Ideally, those comments would be directed towards full-day kindergarten, as that's the topic of this meeting. We ask that you keep your comments to four minutes or less. And generally speaking, this is not a time for questions and answers. So while I understand that a lot of members may have questions, you feel free to pose them, but I don't want to disappoint anyone that is expecting to get an immediate answer on those questions. We will just take that into consideration as part of our path forward on this, this journey that we're on here. So with that, I will begin courtesy of the floor. It looks like we have Mr. Bickelman. So, Mr. Bickelman, you should be able to unmute. Go ahead.
Yeah. I logged into the April 21st board work session a little early, and I heard a disturbing comment from Mrs. Andrea Reese. At the time I logged in, there was a discussion going on between Mr. Navaret and Mr. Regina. And then Mrs. Reese commented about an email from a taxpayer that lives in her development that was sent to Mr. Regina. Mrs. Reese told Mr. Regina that the comment in this email that stated Mr. Regina was twiddling his thumbs during the pandemic and receiving full compensation made her so mad to the point that she was ready to have her children egg his house. I didn't believe what I heard, but I heard it. I was very disappointed to hear this coming from a mother, a teacher, and a board member. It really took me back. So that's one item I wanted to let you know. You can handle it the way you see fit, but that's what I heard. I have a comment about full-day kindergarten. I don't think there's a need for full-day kindergarten at Methacton. I think this presentation should have had all the components to it. Should have had the room capacities in the buildings, what you need to build to have this program, the costs associated with it. I think all the financials should have been presented as a component, because right now it's 8:14. I sat at a meeting the other day, and it was four presenters, and we went till, from 7 o'clock till 10:15. I don't know why the public has to wait five months to hear all the other components of full-day kindergarten. Okay, I've been attending meetings now for six years. I haven't heard any critical educational problems being brought to the board resulting from the current half-day setup. There was no problems from administration, teachers, and none from the community. There is long-run, there is long-running controversy on the issue of full-day kindergarten. And I think Methacton operating a half-day is doing fine with the half-day program. I know you're probably going to have to hire eight to 10 teachers. You're going to have to build rooms to handle it. And it's probably going to be over a million, million and a half to run this program. I don't think you need it. That's the way I feel about full-day kindergarten. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Okay, Mr. Earnshaw?
Thank you, Cam. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thanks. Brian Earnshaw, Lower Providence. Just three points regarding tonight's full-day kindergarten presentation. When this topic first came up, I believe, last year, I had done some research and found quite a few articles in favor of full-day kindergarten and quite a few against it. And I think the board should direct the administration to present a balanced argument and at least address some of their points that in studies that show that full-day kindergarten is not necessary and could actually be detrimental. So that's point one. The second point is that there was some discussion about a consideration should be helping families that need childcare for a half a day. And unless there's going to be some compensation to the district to cover that, I don't think that should be a consideration. And lastly, on full-day kindergarten, I agree with Mr. Bickelman that this presentation should have been more comprehensive. A, a really a key factor, and it was alluded to by several board members, is going to be the budgetary constraints that's going to be facing the district in the year, next year, if not two or more. So that should have been addressed now, I think, rather than waiting five months, along with the building capacity issues that may arise. And then my last question is, there was, the district advertised this meeting on Facebook, which I think was a great thing, because this is, this is a key topic, is going to add a bunch, a lot of cost to the district if it moves forward. So I, I appreciated that being advertised on Facebook. My question is, is the district going to be just say, do the same for Wednesday's meeting, where there's a quite a, a couple of significant financial matters being, that are be voted upon at that meeting, namely the $18 million of borrowing for capital projects, mainly Arrowhead, as well as the contract amendment for first student, which could result in $600,000 and being paid to them for really essentially doing nothing. So I would hope that the administration would advertise for Wednesday's meeting in the same manner they did for this one tonight. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Mr. Andrews?
Good evening. Thank you for the presentation this evening. During the presentation, I looked at that PDE document, 112 pages. I think that, my first thought was that's the education program for, for 10 grades, not kindergarten. There's a 20% age range in kindergarten, 5.0 to 6.0 years, and the brain development range at least is wide. Most students don't read until something up there clicks, whether it's at age three and a half, four and a half, five and a half, sometimes seven and a half. My K recollection is of the outdoor playtime at recess and not the academics. If I was behind, I'd caught, caught up by grade four when my report card was all As, and the comment was, I wasn't working up to my potential. Now I'm known as a retired rocket scientist. Recently, I completed extensive study of full-day kindergarten, and I oppose it. Considerable grade-three PSSA test data analysis shows harm rather than the popular idea that the full-day kindergarten benefit wears off by that time. Even worse, there is harm to many of the youngest full-day kindergarteners. Some call for, so some call for the, the too much academics by the word of trauma. It showed up in a considerable need for costly special services. 61% of the youngest months' children in Radnor require special services. Look in the Living in Lower Providence Facebook Files section for my memo dated 4/25. Full-day kindergarten rewards conformity over creativity. For at least three decades, there's been understanding that full-day kindergarten is right for some and wrong for some. That's why so much Methacton screening is done for half-day kindergarten readiness, for instance. Age 5.0 for many is too soon to be weaned from parents or, or be placed in a class of 20. The 2006 NEA document favoring full-day kindergarten is silent on a child's developmental maturity, as you would expect. Conversely, that is my concern. Neighboring Perk Valley recently studied the issue and decided to keep half-day kindergarten. Cost is a taxpayer issue. Here, full-day kindergarten would cost $1.5 million per year if mandatory. Why harm any students, give free childcare, and have no educational benefit? One kindergarten option is a full-day kindergarten activity fee for those that want it. $5,000 for that one year, similar to the secondary grades' activity fee of $75 a year. In closing, stay with half-day kindergarten at Methacton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Dr. Malik?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Jim Malik, Warsester. With regards to what Mr. Bickelman had talked about, if it's true that a board member up there is encouraging egging of people's homes, you definitely need to do an investigation, and we need to know what the result of the investigation is. That's just the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. As far as your presentation tonight, Mr. Earnshaw made a great point about the studies. What studies are you guys relying on or the speaker relying on, and how can we get them, do you know? Are they going to be posted?
Dr. Malik, I did say at the beginning of this that I wasn't going to be answering questions, and I also stated that this presentation will be posted.
I know the presentation was, I'm asking for the studies that are part of the binder. So can you tell me if the binder will be posted with all the studies in it?
Yes, that's exactly what I said earlier. It will be posted.
Okay, so you're going to post the binder. I appreciate that. In listening to the presentation, I couldn't figure out what the actual goal was of full-day kindergarten. You know, I heard, I heard the speaker talk about Maslow, but Maslow didn't create his theory for full-time kindergarten. And only 2% of people ever get to a point where they're self-actualized, and they're usually mature adults. So I'm not sure I understand where Maslow comes in to full-day kindergarten. As far as the goals go, you know, I was at a meeting here recently where one of your board members said that you guys don't use scores and ranking to measure, make your decisions. So I'm trying to figure out what the goal of full-day kindergarten is. If you're not going to improve scores and you're not going to improve ranking, what's the point? You see what I mean? So I think you need to focus your, moving forward on what your goal is. Is your goal scores, ranking? I mean, what's the ultimate endpoint? Because, you know, most children's personalities are formed between the ages of one and three. And by then, they're locked in. So what it sounds like you people are trying to do is manipulate personalities, and it's not going to work. I don't know whether you ever tried to rationalize with a kindergartner, one-year-old, two-year-old. Doesn't work real well. So you got to rethink your strategy. I don't think it's working. The rankings just came back from the US News World Report, and Methacton now is down to 65th. So over the past four years, you guys have gone from 11th to 65th. You know, can somebody explain why this drop in ranking and what your plan's going to be to fix it? Because I don't think full-day kindergarten is going to be, going to be the thing that fixes it. Do you have any insight on that? Nope, no insight. See, here, here's the problem. You know, you won't answer questions, right? Here at a meeting, you won't answer questions via email to you, and your right-to-know process is closed. So how do you, how do you propose we get information? Is there a way that I don't know of to get information at this point? Because you already had one of your board members, Ms. Reese, say that you guys have decided you're not going to do anything about your right-to-know process. When, can you tell me when that decision was made? When did the board sit down and say that you guys have decided you're not going to do anything different with your right-to-know process? Can you tell me?
Thank you, Dr. Malik.
Okay.
Ms. Smith, it looks like you are next.
Hi, thank you. This is Amy Smith from Warsester. I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Uker for the presentation, and I appreciate all of the questions that the board members were asking. I'd just like to reiterate, as a parent of four students who are currently in the fact and schools, I unfortunately wouldn't have a child in full-day kindergarten, because my youngest is in first grade. But I think that the idea that came out about surveying parents of current Kinders and first-grade families would make a lot of sense. I, like I said, I have four children, and I had, I, I look back on those first, you know, pre-K to second-grade years, and I think that even though all four of my children are very different learners, have very different needs, all four of them would have benefited from a full day. Not because we weren't doing enough at home, not because the preschool wasn't good enough, but just in general, when I think of the supports emotionally, socially, physically, and even academically, that they've needed, the time that Mrs. Kangkro talked about in kindergarten, that time with each student to have more of an individualized experience would be really beneficial. And as we talk about pre-K being so important, there's a lot of families within our district that do everything in their power to make sure that, that their children are having an extended day of pre-K, whether it be, you know, a half-day at the, at the preschool, but then additional activities in the afternoon or in the morning. You know, they're trying to build on that experience to get them ready for kindergarten. And then, you know, you hear from a lot of families that their kid gets to kindergarten, and then, you know, it's, it's, it's like a drop-off in the amount of time and the amount of challenge just because there isn't enough time in that day. So I really do appreciate that, and I appreciate what Mrs. Kangkro said about leveling the playing field, making it equal for, for all students. And I would be really interested to see when the, the contents of the binder are on the website, all those different links to the different studies that Dr. Uker said would be there as well. I think there's a lot of people in the community, from all aspects, that appreciate what the board is doing in giving us this information. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for your efforts.
And thank you, Ms. Smith. At this point, I don't see any other hands raised. So do we have any closing comments from the board before I adjourn the meeting? Okay, Dr. Zerbi, do you have anything else before we adjourn?
I do not. Thank you to everyone for coming out tonight, board members and public alike. We do appreciate the fact that all this information will be shared on our website, and we encourage people to provide feedback. So over the next month, we'll be gathering that information, sharing with the board. We'll be sharing with Dr. Uker, and we look forward to seeing you in October in person to present the next segment of this process. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you again, Dr. Uker, for a wonderful presentation. I, I'm looking forward to hearing what comes next. So thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.
Good night.